Well, January second work meeting session to order. Identify future work medium topics.
Hi, Jim.
No future work topic at this time. Minnesota Rural Counties. Thoughts, ideas? Oh, okay. Good.
Hello, Commissioners.
Good evening. Happy.
Happy New Year to everybody.
Greetings.
Mr. Chair, would you like us to briefly walk through the slides that are included in your packet? I know we only have 10 minutes for this agenda item. We really appreciate you allowing us to join virtually today. But Rob Venasik, my colleague, and I could give a brief overview and then have time for questions if folks have them, if that would be your preference.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. Well, thank you again for having us. My name is Anne Kilzer and I provide administrative support for the Minnesota Rural Counties Group. And then with me today is Rob Venasik, who is one of the three lobbyists providing support to MRC as well. Rob and I will just walk through the six slides that we have. It's a real brief, high-level overview. It goes over some of the same information that was in a letter that was sent to all of you right before the holidays. So on the second slide, you'll see that MRC, our leadership, is Commissioner Luke Johnson is the Chair of MRC for 2024, with Commissioner Neil Peterson from Pennington County is the Vice Chair, and then Sharon Bring, Commissioner Bring from Marshall County, is the Secretary Treasurer. The map that you see in your packet was from April of 2023, but we've actually had several more counties join since that time, some of them very recently, including Stearns, Jackson, Brown, and Martin Counties. I'll turn it over to Rob to just briefly describe Capitol Hill Associates and our role in staffing MRC.
Thank you, Anne. And again, Rob Venasik here. I joined Capitol Hill Associates about a half dozen years ago. Prior to that, lobbied at the Minnesota Legislature for a dozen years with my own shop, but and spent a good, more than a handful of years lobbying and working out in Washington DC. Firm's co-owner, myself, and then Sam Walseth. He's been with Capitol Hill for 20, over 20 years now. And the firm has been around since 1981. We do, we've had the services of Britta Torkelson, who's been lobbying for a good, maybe five years now at the State Capitol after, after she finished law school. And we were very fortunate to have Anne join us just, just a couple of years ago doing the association management work for our firm. But as it relates to MRC and CHA Capitol Hill, Britta Torkelson is our lead lobbyist with support from Sam and myself on all things MRC-related. And happy to answer, we'll keep going, but happy to answer questions if you have them.
Yep. And one thing I would add is many of you are probably familiar with Dan Larson, who was the Executive Director for MRC for many years, retired, and when he retired, MRC decided to take a bit of a different staffing approach rather than having one executive director hiring us as a team. So again, as Rob mentioned, I provide the Administrative Services Association Management Support. May have met many of you, if not all of you, in my previous role, have worked at the Association of Minnesota Counties for several years. And then lobbying support as well. So in regard to services, in addition to the lobbying support that Rob mentioned, the administrative support I provide in organizing all of the monthly meetings and providing logistics for those, helping set the agenda and making sure that everybody has that information. Not only the lobbying, but our intergovernmental team also helps with priority setting, legislative agenda setting for the upcoming legislative session. And we're also working with state agencies as well. So there are sometimes, from time to time, as you're well aware, work groups or opportunities to comment with state agencies, and our team has relationships with those folks as well and can engage on MRC's behalf. And then also allowing the opportunities, a big part of our meetings oftentimes is just counties, being able to share information about issues that are specific to rural counties, sharing of best practices or ideas among counties, or really problem solving, and having the time to talk with other county commissioners who are primarily focused on rural areas or rural issues as you are. The dues range from $2,200 to $2,900 annually, and it's a tiered system with Beltrami's population, you'd probably be in that, that highest tier of dues, which would be $2,900 per year annually for those services. So Rob's going to talk just very briefly about the agenda setting for the 2024 legislative, upcoming legislative session, and then we'll take questions.
So we, in 2023, our annual meeting at MRC over in Alexandria, they board did decide to mirror a little, not exactly, but very, very close to the similar process that AMC uses, just to give, provide a little more focus. And that is such thing as identifying whether or not a proposal may be actionable. Can we introduce a bill? Or and/or does it just affect one county? You know, some individual county issue, or does it actually have impact to the rural counties generally and a majority of those? And could an issue, you know, potentially have a sizable fiscal impact? You know, generally in counties. So those considerations are now in place. And through that process, the board did vote on what the priorities should be for 2024. And you can see the actual tally on your, in your handouts that's, that has the Capitol dome on the right side of it, where there were 18 votes to bring up solid waste, you know, demolition, landfills primarily, and all things solid waste, as counties are mandated by the state to deal with solid waste. That ends up on your back. So there's a number of, there's more and more percolating in that space. And MRC is wanting to be a little bit more of a leader there. Drainage issues, many county authorities, drainage issues reside with the county being the drainage authority. And there's been a bit of a fight. Some environmentalists are pushing an agenda, and frankly, we and some others have been, been pushing back. So those, we're probably landing at the top two, those as our, our priorities for 2024. No surprise, given the voting, but we have a eight-page and probably gonna potentially, it's about an eight, we'll just say eight-page platform of ongoing issues that do encompass infrastructure, roads, bridges, county program aid, et cetera, and we may be adding something on. If we don't have it already, housing, as that's becoming a little more of a hot button, as well as childcare. So we did have, most recently, we had broadband funding for rural, statewide broadband, you know, money for CPA, infrastructure, roads, bridges, et cetera, but I'll, we'll keep moving here and I'll turn back to Anne.
Yeah, and that's really kind of the overview that we wanted to present to it, some of the highlights of the work that MRC is doing. Happy to take any questions. I know your agenda is tight this afternoon, so we don't want to take too much time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Joe. Thank you, Anne and Rob. Certainly appreciate your insight and info here. I, for one, am certainly interested in at least trying these folks out for the next year and, you know, giving them a trial run. I think it's a very nominal fee, this $2,900. I know, I know we have the budget for it. And these three lobbyists, Rob, Sam, and, and Britta are certainly three of the most reputable lobbyists down in St. Paul. I know that from my time working down there and, and from following the legislature since. I know Sam and Rob have a lot of experience working on solid waste and landfill legislation. And, and we are, you know, certainly in, in, need a little bit of help on that front right now with our hub-and-spoke project that we're running into some obstacles with, with MPCA. And so I would like us to consider them. I think it would supplement our lobbying work really well. It's another set of eyes and ears at the Capitol that we certainly need all the help we can get this year. But I did have a question about lobbying strategy, tactics, et cetera. Well, just, I really want to know, do you work with the governor and the governor's staff at all as well? In addition to the legislature, could you talk about that for a minute or so?
Absolutely. To answer the question, we're, as the administration goes, we have had a number of commissioners come in and speak to the board as well as sometimes it's been their staff, but often when you get down to the more staff level, we're the ones talking to them at the different agencies and departments. I can't say we have, you know, worked over the governor one-on-one, but we certainly have access. We know some of those folks, and granted, it's been a pretty quick and short song of the musical chairs of the staff that's been at the, working on staff in the governor's office of late, but we do stay on top of the staffing changes and certainly do work with those folks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm curious, what counties are not allowed to be members?
So the only counties that are not allowed to be members are the seven metro counties.
Okay, so my concern is having Stearns just join, that seems pretty close to the metro, and I'm a little worried about the size of Stearns County, and can they overshadow all the other counties and sort of suck all the oxygen out of the room? And given their size, if they're only going to pay $2,900, and we got this little poor county in Beltrami County paying $2,900, seems like there's a little bit of a mismatch of dollars and population.
I'd take the first swing. So Stearns, they only get, you know, just like, they're just, they're one of 30, you know, and we've been growing, 30-odd counties. So they don't get any bigger voice or any additional, you know, services than little, you know, Pipestone County, or, you know, big, although it's got big in the name, Big Stone County, you know. It's not, there's not a lot of folks out, out that way, but we, it's just another rural voice. And frankly, we see Stearns County as an asset just because there's, for the rural, Minnesota rural counties, because they have, they bring more, they have more legislators in their delegation, so they bring more voice to the work of MRC, is how I'd, I'd answer that question.
Just a follow-up to that. I didn't see the Department of Corrections on your list of priorities. And it seems to me that most of the, a lot of the rural counties are experiencing extreme difficulties with the Department of Corrections and changing rules and regulations and, and, and all the the problems that they're causing us. And is that something that has even been talked about? Is that something that could rise to a level of?
It certainly, yes, it certainly could. It is something that we have talked about, corrections issues as they're happening at the legislature. We have spent a fair amount of board time, at, at least on two occasions, just last session, talking about corrections, and we've brought in AMC staff as well. And, but, yes, you don't, you don't see those, that's not, corrections won't likely be on the 24 platform, but with, as you say, the amount of issues that are starting to percolate there, you know, it, it certainly could come around here in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Anne. Good to see you.
Bye.
So a number of years back, you know, we were part of MRC, and at the time, you know, I felt that we weren't really getting our, our bang for our buck. So, you know, I, I thought during that time, it was probably best that we parted ways. But now, you know, I, I'm a person that believes in second chances. And seeing some of the work that you guys do, you know, I, I think I would be in support of doing a, doing a year with MRC and see how that goes. I think one of my, my concerns, though, is, is as Commissioner Carlson brought up, is, are the dues. You know, it's not, I don't have to, to tell everybody that Beltrami County is the second poorest county in Minnesota. And for us to come up with $2,900. I mean, I, I'm not saying it's impossible, but you know, it's something that we'll have to, to, to find. So are the dues negotiable?
I would respond to that. You'd probably have to bring it to the MRC leadership to ask. Right now, the dues structure is based on population. I mean, it goes up by, you know, it's incremental based on population. I think that they've been mindful. I believe the dues structure's been similar for many years, hopeful, hoping that it's accessible for counties who want to join. But I don't think that's something that Rob or I could answer right away, but we could certainly, either you could reach out to Luke Johnson himself, or let us know if it's something you'd like us to raise at the next MRC meeting, which actually is occurring next Monday, January 8th.
Okay, I just want to mention too, that many times our work session, you kind of hear of proposals and ideas, and then we bring it up the following, if we want action right away, we bring it up at the next time we meet. So it's good to hear these opportunities for us, and then we'll hash it over and talk about it and decide which direction we go.
We, we just certainly appreciate the time. And if you have any, again, open to any questions offline as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, for clarification, Anne, or can we not put this on the regular agenda?
I'm, I'm open to what you folks suggest. If, if you've had enough time looking through it and thinking about it, we could put it on, on the agenda, correct, Tom, if we wish.
Yes, Mr. Chair, you as the board can decide if you'd like to put this on your agenda and then take an action and discuss it further.
Well, Mr. Chair, I don't see a sense in delaying, you know, whether we want to join or not, so. If we. No, no.
Let's talk about it.
You know, are we putting it on the agenda? I don't care.
Yeah, I think we can.
Then we'll.
MRC.
All right. Let's move on to corrections orders.
Good evening, Commissioners. How are you guys doing?
Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Here I am again. As you know, that you all received a letter corrective, a correction order from Minnesota Department of Corrections, resulting from a grievance from a past offender who we housed. Just a small synopsis, this offender was housed, he ended up grieving the fact that we had locked him down because he refused to be housed at a county. So a few other items stemmed, so a small synopsis of what's happened in 2023. We have received a corrective order, having, taking our housing numbers from 132 down to 80. And we are currently running the best we can, I would say, an approximation of 70, 75 in-house to, I would say, 40 to 60 out-of-house for out-of-county. This individual, we, during this corrective order, when we received it in January, we had to change many procedures, rules, policies, and notifications. So if an individual comes into our custody, they're well-knowing and signing actually a rule in our jail that they will be subject to be housed at a county because of the numbers and population. This individual decided to decline, and in our rules and policy, we will lock them down for 30 days due to the fact that we can't, we have limited capacity to ship out. So if an individual comes in and they are maybe on a housing, housing run is what we call them, we have to see, make sure they have lower or no medical issues, lower or no mental health issues, we have no in-person court dates. Their charges are lower or lessened and not persons offenses, and also their classification is lower. So we have five items that we are desperately trying to seek out all these individuals, making sure that our sister counties are willing to house these other individuals for us because we want to ship the best of our best. And of which this individual did meet most and all of those qualifications other than they declined to go. If an individual declines to go, we do not taze them, we do not OC them, we do not wrestle them into the van, we don't do any of that. It's, there's all kinds of gamut of items that would come up with that. So we let them know they'll be locked down for 30 days, and so then we take away different privileges. For those 30 days, there's also review hearings, which we had done in this actual instance. I reviewed it, there are a few documentation errors. The items were done, the documentation wasn't there. So those items had to be followed up on with body cameras and everything else. Fast-forwarded to this order, currently, my suggestion to the sheriff and the county is to take our, this order and basically, on the behalf of the county, review it and basically ask them to reconsider due to the fact that they requested an order, which should have been an action. A correction action versus a correction order are completely different. A correction order, which we received in January, means that there is a danger to individuals' compliance with physical or life-threatening harm. And the reason why they did that to us is because we had low staff, and we were sending people to the ER, and we didn't have enough staff to send them in the appropriate timeframe that the DOC stated. So that's on a high-level synopsis. This, there was no life threatened, there was no harm, there was no nothing. It was basically a stubbornness of an individual, and they did not want to be locked down. So fast-forwarding to this, this individual also gets multiple ties and multiple chances to get off of lockdown because we are transporting people out on a daily basis, sometimes multiple times a day. Again, this is all because the DOC took away our beds. And so now we're fighting two hands, and it is a struggle on every level. But yes, I'm asking if we could, if it's possible, to write a letter and basically state that this should have been a corrective action, given us 30 days to correct whatever that they had found, instead of a corrective order, which is completely, to me, way over the top, and that's not what should have happened. So.
Questions?
What, do you have something written up or, or some kind of resolution or something that we need to, to do that we would potentially pass yet tonight, or?
Well, basically, what it is, is it would be a, a letter, I'm working on a draft right now. And it would be in, basically addressing Mr. Justin Roberts, which he is our, one of the inspectors. And it's going to go off of Minnesota Statute 241.021, the appeal process. And I've been just basically in line 100% with this statute and lining up of what their laws and rules state. And they should be putting us, like I said before, giving us 30 days to look to see what our items are. And again, I'm going to say this again, I know I've talked to each one of you individually about this. No matter what jail or facility across the nation, let alone our, our county, you will find issues with it. You have people running it. And it's people have that, but we are going to do the best we can to do it in the best way possible. And 99% of these items that DOC finds, we've already corrected them when we receive these orders or actions. So.
Do you need, do you need just a consensus of the board, or do you need an actual motion and stuff? You had a regular meeting, or?
I believe this is more of an update, if I'm not. Yeah, we'll be appealing, going through the actual appeal process in that statute.
Okay.
So. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other questions coming? Thank you, Glenn Lander. All right, looking at the next one. Statutory update of body camera audit.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have been tasked with providing you an update to a body cam audit that was conducted on the sheriff's office. Just a little backstory of where we're at with that is in 2016, the state legisla, state issued legislation regarding body worn cameras in law enforcement. And they set up statutes that require policies to be in place, audits to be done, both internal and external audits. And part of that is including a biannual audit from an external agency. In March of 2019, the sheriff's office really started looking at body worn cameras. And part of the legislation that had been put in place was that we had to seek public input, which we did in March of 2019. We presented it in a work session to this board, as well as a public session. In 2019, we purchased body worn cameras, and we've been using them ever since. The first audit we did with Rampart Audit LLC was in August of 2021. Um, it went swimmingly, uh, they had a couple of, um, policy, uh, verbiage that wanted to be changed, uh, which we did. And then this was our second one, was to be done in two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, I met with, uh, a representative from Rampart, uh, Audit LLC in October. We went over, uh, our policy procedures. Uh, we did a, a, a sample of a hundred and thirty-two, uh, incidents um, from calls for service from the sheriff's office. And went through with the audit, uh, of the hundred and thirty-two uh, C F Ss that we reviewed, all of them were, there were no flaws. Uh, they did identify a couple of, again, small pieces of verbiage that had changed, um, that they recommended being changed in the report that you guys have included. Um, it was retention periods, we had said that we would retain, um, certain, uh, items, uh, but we didn't have a retention timeframe on that, so we, we, we've remedied that, um, which they, they, they do acknowledge in the report. Uh, the other thing that was brought up was that in the two thousand and twenty-three legislative session, there were some changes that were made that weren't put into effect until after our audit. However, before the report was put out, uh, I've reviewed them. I think we fall, everything, all of our policies fall within that. I think we'll have some verbiage changes within our policy, uh, just to, uh, really specify that we are acknowledging that, uh, that requirement. Uh, otherwise, the audit went fine. Um, th- the finding on the last page is, uh, very well laid out, uh, is substantially compliant with Minnesota state statutes. I will say that body-worn cameras, I, I myself too, as somebody who was, I don't wanna say skeptical about them, but you know, as being a cop for a while and then having this new piece of equipment, it was definitely uh, a new, but there is nothing better than having a, you know, when a complaint comes in about, uh, actions that a deputy took and we're able to quickly go back and review the camera footage. Um, and ninety-nine percent of the time, we're able to call in a family or whoever complained. Uh, we recently had one where it was a mom complaining on her son's behalf and to be able to call a family member in and say, let's watch this together. Um, and ninety-five percent of those times, it's the, somebody saying, I'm sorry about that. Um, uh, it, it really shows, um, what, what the guys and gals are out there doing, so. That's what I have for you.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Um, so, the, the body camera, uh, are all deputies, do they all have them, or, or how does that, how does that work?
Yeah, so every deputy is issued a body-worn camera, the policy requires that. Um, uniformed deputies, uniformed personnel, um, when they're having an interaction with somebody, we have a, a, you know, a number of things where we activate them for them, it's required to be activated. We have every, every officer for the city and the county, uh, to speak on their behalf, has a body-worn camera and we activate them with, uh, you know, anytime we have contact with the public.
You don't have one on you right now?
I do not, mine's on my vest in my car.
I was, I was kinda curious to see what they look like and how, how, how they may be, uh, activated and, and things like that and, and, uh, curious to know, um, what type of situations, is it all calls that, that you activate them, or?
Whenever we have contact with the public.
Okay.
Um, uh, especially initially, um, we, we turn it on. Um, there are privacy issues that, you know, there's times where we don't. Um, but yeah, we, we, we activate it every time, I'd be happy to come back, um, and bring you, show you what we carry, I could bring you a example of, um, what the, the, the footage looks like, it's really high-resolution. Um, although, you know, you're getting a two-dimensional picture of it, which can sometimes be difficult too.
Yeah, I think that would be nice, I mean, I'm kinda interested and curious, you know, and, uh, our, our meetings are live-stream, I think, but, you know, which is beneficial to the public, you know, I, I, I would much rather see it put in use in the boardroom than out on the street, so.
Absolutely, we'll work on that, I can find something that would have a, something that would be able to be viewed and you could see, you know, they, they have audio on them as well. Um, they're linked to our squad cars, so when we turn our lights on, on our squad car, it also activates the camera. So it's not necessarily, we need to get out and remember to, you know, just find motor skills and sometimes you're thought, in an emergency situation, you might forget to push the button, but once you've activated your lights and vice versa. If we're on scene and we activate our camera, our, our body-worn camera, our camera at our squad car also turns on, have another perspective from it as well.
Yeah, which reminds me, I think I've seen one of those, uh, recently in the last year and, and how that worked. Um, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, we move to that, to the ice rescues.
Good evening, Commissioner Sheriff Jason Riggs. Um, I do have, uh, Fire Chief Rick Thayer here from the Kellier Fire and Rescue Crew tonight. I did invite Lieutenant Hannah Michler here, but she is not feeling well tonight and so she is not going to be present. Uh, but if we have any questions that I can't answer, maybe from the state level, I could pose those uh, to them later on and, and get back to you on those. Um, like I said, Rick is here, so if you have direct questions regarding the fire side of things, I would be more than happy to have him come up and, and, and address those with you as well, so. Um, I was in the process of putting together a formal presentation for you, but as of Friday night, uh, my world kinda got sidelined with Upper Red Lake and then I've been just kind of fielding probably upwards of thirty or forty media uh, things here recently, so I apologize for not having something formalized. Um, I will tell you, um, as of our early ice season began, um, was on eleven twenty-five of this year, we had, um, I'm sorry. Twelve-one was our first ice rescue and then we've had seven leading up to this last Friday night's events. Um, that range is anywhere from one or two people being helped off the ice by Kellier Fire and Rescue and/or deputies up to an incident where we had thirty-some folks taken off in one ice sheet. And then Friday night, we had one hundred and twenty-two, uh, persons that were taken up in ice flow that had moved away from uh, the shoreline ice just outside of Rogers, uh, resort. Um, with that being said, um, I've taken a number of public outcry over the last couple of weeks about, um, the safety up there. Talking to my staff who have been dealing with it, talking with, uh, Chief Thayer here about what's been going on. I felt it pertinent for public safety, I felt that there was a tipping point between um, the economic side of things up there versus the public safety side of things, and so I contacted uh, the D N R and the Commissioner on, um, Saturday morning and made the decision to shut down the lakes, I'd contacted, you know, I contacted Craig and Tim right off the bat because you were the two that were gonna be affected the most, uh, with your constituents and then I think I got, I was able to get hold of John a little bit later that night, but then it just, everything fell apart as far as my timeline went, um, so I apologize, Commissioner Gould and Commissioner Anderson, for not getting to you a little sooner about this. Um, in a sense, we, I've shut down, uh, most vehicle traffic on Upper Red Lake by order through, uh, statute eighty-six B point one oh six, which gives me the authority to do that. Um, with that being said, I have, because of that area is so remote, uh, it's remote for the sense of emergency response, it's remote for the sense of, uh, just in general, the services that are provided up there. I thought by completely shutting off all vehicle traffic, it would completely handcuff us, and so what I did was I communicated with all of the resort owners that they could have limited vehicle travel on the lakes to ensure safe ice conditions for their walkout clients and also to check on their welfare while they're out on the ice. Um, our problem isn't with our local people up there, it's with the people that come from South Dakota and Cedar Rapids, Iowa and Minnetonka, because they just don't know the lake, there's no snow out there this year. And so, once they leave the shoreline and are on public water, they can pretty much go anywhere and they typically are, and they're finding their way into troubled spots, and that's what we've been seeing. Um, there is a little bit of some issues up there with, you know, every year, we've dealt with this every year for as long as I've worked with the county and I guarantee you, it's happened with us, or, or well beyond that. In that we do these ice rescues every year, they happen every year, no matter what. Um, some years are more than others, it all depends on how the weather has, has been going. Um, I talked to Sheriff Keith Winger on Saturday and I told him what I was gonna do because I knew that he had done it back in two thousand and five. It was a similar type of year for us, um, but it didn't extend quite this long into the season. Um, my concerns initially going into this was, is we, we, we are a very rural county, we don't have a lot of personnel that can enforce these types of rules. And so when I talked to our county attorney and the state officials, I said, I'm not looking to go up there and create revenue by writing a lot of tickets, my goal here is public safety. And we will deal with this if there are issues, but we can't possibly respond to everybody's complaints up there about people driving on the lake. You know, there's an order. We did all the notifications that we could by posting, by talking to all the resorts and by putting it out on our social media pages and, and through the news, uh, agencies and affiliates. Now, if you violate the order and you go out there without the express written permission or the express written consent of myself, um, you're subject to, if you have an emergency, being charged with, uh, violating that, that, that order or that statute, which could subsequently result in fines and/or civil penalties, depending on, you know, if we choose to seek them. Um, I know, I, I, I've talked about this with every sheriff that, that I have worked for and it has, this has come up every few years. And is that, should we be charging people, uh, charging them monetarily for ice rescues or any type of search and rescue for that matter? And as a public safety professional, I, I want to tell you, I myself would be very cautious on that because the first thing I wanna say is, is we don't want to delay an emergency response. And if you have somebody that's up there like, ooh, I could get in trouble, I could get to a point where I might need help, but I refuse, or I just choose to delay that because I'm not really in an emergency yet and we did delay that so long that now there is an emergency or they, or worse, they get hurt or killed, that would be on us because I feel that this is our obligation. And I, Rick, if you wanna, do you have any comments on that as well, or? Okay. Um, Kellier and Fire Rescue have been rock stars for us every year for these ice rescues, they're our solid, they're our go-to, they're trained, they have, you know, they have limited equipment, I would like to see them have more equipment, you know, I don't think they, there's any reason why, you know, they shouldn't be able to get some kind of state funding or grants for more equipment for this specific issue. And I myself, uh, one will be an advocate for that. Um, and whether that's jointly owned or whatever, what we can discuss, sorry, we can discuss that later. Um, but that would be my two cents on what we've been seeing thus far for ice rescues. I'm sure there's gonna be some questions, so I'm gonna go ahead and leave it open for you folks a few.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so I think I was the one that asked for this work topic last time. And so, obviously I have constituents saying, I hope you're charging these people, and of course, I, I, it was important that you were able to answer that question, so thank you for doing that.
Yep.
Um, the biggest question I have is, is there any way to locate equipment right there in Waschkis, because obviously that's gonna be a lot closer, as close as, as Rick and, 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 and you guys are in Kellier, right?
One of the things I forgot to tell you is, I talked to Colonel Smith at the D N R on Saturday morning. Um, the state had already met, uh, prior to me shutting down, well, they met right after I shut, or right after I informed them I was gonna do this. Um, the state broke Bryce's airboat, it broke the motor mounts Friday night, during Friday night's rescue. So the state of Minnesota took a boat out of Montevideo and moved it into Waschkis immediately. The very, that very next day, Sunday, they moved a boat out of New Ulm up to Waschkis, so we had two airboats at our use this weekend, thank God we did not need to use them, uh, at least I'm not aware of anything that. Oh yeah, that's right, because they, they also had an ice rescue yesterday, so, um, it's just been one of those years, so I'm, I apologize, Commissioner, um, we do have some resources that were in the area for this specific weekend, because we knew it was probably gonna be a busy weekend. And when I did go, I did go in person to all the resorts and spoke to all of the owners when I was able to shut down the lake and I would say two-thirds of them, half of two-thirds of them were like, we kinda figured this was coming. Um, nobody was really disrespectful, everybody was, they were concerned, but they were all erring on the side of public safety and they all kinda got it, so I hope that helps.
It, I, I thought I had heard somewhere in some other states, whether it's Colorado or Wyoming or somewhere where outfitters and resurters, um, have the ability to sell a, a disaster policy, um, so if you're gonna go out, um, out of that resort or out of that, with that outfitter, that part of the fee that you pay goes into a fund of some, of some sort that can help, uh, reimburse the agencies that come to your rescue, whether it's Kellier Fire Department or Beltrami County or State of Minnesota. Is that something that we, we could look into, is that a possibility?
Do you wanna?
Oh, well, Mr. Chair, in all, um, a few years, I mean, like, like, uh, the sheriff said, we, we deal with this situation year after year and, um, I believe, uh, we did try to discuss this, uh, a number of years back, but there was really no, no movement. Um, I think maybe the sheriff at the time felt that it wasn't something that we could do, but, you know, I'm, I'm not too, not too sure, you know, times and things change, so.
I do have, I, I do have calls out to some peers, uh, I've contacted Sheriff Ramsey out of St. Louis County. Um, typically, they've, they've dealt with this on Lake Superior towards the end of the year, uh, with ice floes breaking free on Lake Superior. Um, he says typically they do not charge for this, um, I don't know if the county has enacted some type of, of, uh, issue where they can in certain circumstances where the order is placed out to, to stay out the lake and they, and they go about doing it, that's something that we could certainly do as well. I guess that would be a question for Mr. Hanson, if, you know, if, if beyond a criminal charge, if there would be something that, you know, as a county, if, if the sheriff gives an order and it's ignored and there's a rescue, I mean, is that an ordinance passed that you guys could pass and that would be something that we could seek, I, I, I just don't know the answer to that.
Joe?
Um, yeah. I certainly wanna thank you, Sheriff, for your order, I'm in complete support and, um, I'm glad you made the decision you did and, and I wanna thank Kellier and, and all their efforts, uh, you know, uh, rescuing armed citizens. Um, I think the idea of, uh, charging people to be rescued is just kinda silly. Um, this is why you guys exist, I mean, people make mistakes every day and you guys are responding to folks that are in emergency situations, whether it's no fault of their own or whether it's a, uh, decision that they've regretted, um, so I just wanna thank you for, for your order and, and for your guys' response. Um, but I also wonder if, uh, you know, we're, we're living in unprecedented times, uh, in climate history. It's, uh, very dangerous times right now. And so I wonder if, um, we can't even, if, if we could take this even a step further and, uh, also limit foot traffic out onto the ice, not just recreational vehicles, but foot traffic as well and include every lake in the county. Um, it's not safe out there, this is the warmest year in a hundred year, uh, the warmest December in a hundred years. It's the warmest December in a hundred and fifty years in some parts of the state. So I wonder if we couldn't, you know, pass something tonight or, or you could further extend your, your, uh, order at least for the next two weeks and we could revisit it at our next board meeting. Um, just to, um, ban foot traffic and recreational use on any lake in the county right now. Um, it's.
So Commissioner, I kinda, I actually looked into what my authority was at the time that I went through this process because this is something that I've never had, I personally have never had to deal with from the administrative side of things, I mean, I posted public accesses that were deemed unfit for vehicle traffic and we barricaded those and put up signs in years past. Um, the sheriff of the county. The sheriff of the county, um, has no authority to ban, uh, foot traffic on. Uh, any of the lakes. The only thing that I have the authority to do is ban, uh, motorized vehicle traffic. Or, or limited for, to, in specific, for specific reasons. And those reasons would have to be identified on a case by case basis. Um. It would be virtually impossible to enforce if we got into multiple lakes. Um. It's almost impossible on one, on one large lake right now. I think, you know, it'd be a lot easier if we could just say that this was, if we were dealing with the same thing on Lake Bemidji. It'd be a considerably easier thing to deal with just because it's, there's, there's more geor- geographic services around this area. I just like this microphone here. Uh, must be very handsy too. Um, but. Yeah, I don't have the authority to limit foot traffic on like, I can, and I've been on the radio and been in, uh, on lots of different news media now saying. If you're going to go out, use a guide. If you're going to go out, use a resort. If you're going to go out. On foot, make sure people know where you're going. Where, bring your float coat, bring your life jacket, bring a spud and ice clates and ice picks. And, and know what you're doing. Don't just go out arbitrarily and don't use alcohol or, or consume. Uh, you know, any type of illegal substances before you go out because altered mind is gonna be detrimental to the way you think and how you act in an emergency. Um, I, I have a son who absolutely loves to fish and is desperately wanting to go out on the lake right now. And I said, I'm not gonna be the guy that says, don't be doing this and then go out and do it myself and, and then end up in trouble. So.
Mr. Chair, and so just to follow up on that, I agree that the educational piece is a huge part of it. So. The more that we can be online and, uh, on the radio and maybe a ad in the newspaper the next few weeks, you know, would, would be, uh. Would be super helpful discouraging people to, um, go out there and remind them of what the order is. Um, so maybe my question is, is more for, uh, the attorney, uh, David. Uh, does the county board have the authority to limit foot traffic on lakes within the county? Um, and maybe I, I certainly see your point, uh, in, in terms of, uh, capacity for law enforcement to. Police every lake, but maybe the top three populous lakes, uh, you know, maybe we could include Lake Bemidji and a couple other lakes.
Oh. I'll get to that in a second. I'm gonna clarify this a little bit. I think he's gonna, so. The sheriff's the public safety authority in the county. So he has more authority than the board does from that perspective. Uh, the board didn't declare an emergency, so he, you know, in certain circumstances. And so with. A declaration of emergency, that's gonna broaden both your authority and his authority. Um, however, there's some very stringent statutory definitions of what, you know, constitutes an emergency and what doesn't. Uh, or a natural disaster or something like that. And I don't know if, you know, thin ice would, would rise to that level. I, I just can't imagine that it would. Um. And then you risk, you really risk is an enforcement question if, you know, don't. Say something that you can't enforce because then you're gonna create liability for the county, which I very much caution you against. So I, I don't believe, and I'm shooting from the hip here a little bit, you know, because, you know, I, I could definitely do more further research on this, but. My knee jerk would be that no, the, the county board does not have the authority to close a lake, you know, you know, surface ice or anything like that. Again, like the challenge, you, you can put a public access, like, you know, so, you know, there's a lot of. Public accesses in Beltrami County that are owned by Beltrami County and you could, by all means tonight, say. You know, have, uh, Dick Moore or, you know, Brent Root or the sheriff goes, you know, close the public accesses, right? The problem with Red Lake is most of the land don't, most people going on there are doing it for private. Land, you know, and that, that's, that's, that's a restriction of movement. We're a free country. You don't restrict people's movement, you know, they, they can. Go do that. Again, it's at their risk. Um, so short answer, well, turn it into a long answer. I don't believe you have that authority, um, barring a declaration of an emergency or natural disaster.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one really quick one, uh, Sheriff. As far as the, the, the vehicles, the fish houses, all, all the stuff that's gone through the ice up there. You know where we're at with getting those out and how we're gonna get those out and when?
I don't. I was actually gonna reach out to, uh, from the cases that we have and, and, and you have to understand. Um, there are pro- for every, for every one that we have logged, which is seven right now, there are probably upwards of five. Times that amount that haven't been recorded with us. Um, so that's gonna be very difficult to, to, to manage. Um, obviously we can check on the plane. We got a lot of, we got a lot of free press on the plane that landed on the lake. But, um. With the ATVs, I know Chris Ellis has been contacted from Ellis Towing. He, he does ice recovery. And so I know that he's been contacted because I talked to his mother-in-law the other day. Um, I was gonna check in with them to see what they have categorized right now and. And, and see where we are at that process. They have, they have forty-eight hours to report it to, to me and they have, uh, thirty days barring any type of, uh. I would, I would want to be safe ice conditions, uh, to get it out. So, which I think is ridiculous. I think personally. Um, if, if, if something goes in the lake, it should be gotten out at the most reasonable period of time at the owner's expense. Um, I think thirty days is too long myself, but I think that would take legislation to get passed. So that's what the state law allows right now. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I sure wish I had more than five minutes because I have a lot of questions, concerns and comments, you know, uh. Uh, but I guess I'll, I'll take what I have left here. Uh, first I wanna, uh, thank the Kelly Fire and Rescue. Guys are, are most often times the first ones. You know, responding and on the scene. So I appreciate you guys' uh, efforts there. I'm gonna thank the sheriff and, and, uh. And your department, your office and, and what you're doing, you know, to help to assist the public. Uh, seven ice rescues, it, uh, seems, uh. Kind of a lot, you know, I mean, uh, I get a lot of calls, uh, questions, uh. Emails, text messages in regards to. Um, what's happening up there, you know, and our, our residents are concerned, you know, our, our resident, residents are concerned about the, their taxes. Uh, they're concerned about their safety of, um. People that are going out there, they're, they're definitely concerned about their, their family members that are going out there to, to rescue these folks. So. Uh, I'm just kinda curious, um. And I know that the, each situation is different, but just wanna kinda wondering if you might have, uh. An estimate on, on what it might cost, you know, to, uh, to do an ice rescue, uh, because I imagine. Um, last week with the a hundred and twenty-two that were rescued, uh, I'm, I'm sure that probably wasn't, uh. Uh. Uh, cheap.
Ev- everything really boils down to time because everything that's done on this is, is man-hours driven. Um. If we include an aircraft, obviously that expense, uh, of, of man-hours and fuel for an aircraft. Um, the state has an airport stationed in this area and it's, it's for the use of this area. Uh, Bemidji Fire has a hovercraft. Um, they don't like, they won't tell you, they don't like to use it because it's, it, it breaks apart quite a bit. It's cause, it's pretty expensive to maintain. Um. But, you know, from a man-hour standpoint, you know, any given time, you know, that, that one, Rick, if I'm not mistaken, that was just a couple hours, wasn't it?
But we also have to remember that the, the Kelly Fire and Rescue, majority of them are, are volunteers. So I mean.
Absolutely. But they, I mean, but, um, that, that's where, when I was answering these questions, I. I've been given the, the generic answer of an educated guess and I would say that. On the low end, a few thousand dollars and on the high end, upwards of ten, if we start including an aircraft and, you know. Multiple, you know, types of facets and it's ongoing. We typically spend more time looking for people. When they have an issue, like the, the onesies, twosies that drive away and, and fall in the water and we don't know where they're at, those take a little bit longer to find. Getting them out is easier because it's just one or two people, but.
Well, you know, and, uh. Uh, like I said, Mr. Chair, I wish I had more time, especially being that, you know. Um, it is, it is part of my district or it is in my district and, you know, I'm, I'm concerned, you know, uh. Uh, there was a, a common mention that, um, um. You know, the Kelly Fire and Rescue could use some assistance and I, and I. Uh, personally know that they can use some financial assistance, you know, uh, they, they work year round, you know, this isn't the only time that, uh. That the department up there, uh, keeps busy, you know, they keep busy during the, the summer months, you know, when we have, uh, uh, open water. Um, you know, I, right now I know that, uh, Kelly Fire and Rescue, you know, is, is seeking donations for, uh. A new, uh, extraction, um. Equipment, you know, so they can help, you know, our folks that, that may, uh. Uh, may need it, you know, and, uh, if they don't have it, then what, you know, it's, uh. So some, you know, being, um. So far north and, and not having access to a lot of, uh, uh, quick response, you know, times of the essence. Um, you know, so I, I mean, I, I get. You know, the, the frustration about wanting to charge, you know, the resorts, you know, uh, a, a fee for, for doing this. You know, and, and I'm not, you know, opposed to, you know, that idea. If, if it was going for, you know, a good cause, I mean, if. If there were a hundred and twenty-two that were rescued, if they all paid a five dollar, uh, fee, that would be six hundred and ten dollars, you know, that could use, you know. Could go towards, you know, a local fire and rescue, you know, which, uh, would be helpful and, and, you know, securing, you know, the equipment that they need. Um. You know, and, and I get that the, the resorts, you know, they're, they're a business and, and they, you know, wanna provide. Uh, food and, and financial stability for their family. So I, I see both sides. You know, which is, uh, which makes this, uh, issue, you know, kinda complicated, you know, because I, I, I respect their business and, and, you know, I also have a. You know, a, a duty to, to represent my constituents and, and listen to their concerns as well. You know, there was, uh, I believe there was a mention that. Uh, you know, maybe advertise a little bit more, but I, I, it's my understanding, a lot of these folks that, that come up. Are really not from the area. So trying to find a good way to really publicize, you know, the, the safety conditions, uh. I, I think, um. Is, is challenging excel in itself, uh, but I believe, you know, the, the Upper Red Lake, uh. Association, you know, does great work and I'm hopeful that, uh. That, you know, there's some collaboration between the resorts where they can educate, you know, the, the folks that come up, you know, because. You know. We're, we're a poor county and, and our resources are limited. And. But, but they spend money, you know, and we're, we're kinda dependent on, on the money that they spend. So. It's, um, it's difficult, but I'm hopeful that, um, with this most recent one that. You know, folks, uh. Understand and realize that. That there's, there's more than, than risking, you know, a lot of folks' lives and. What, three, five, why?
I, I, I gotta ask that question today. Why are people still doing this? And I'm like. I honestly don't know. It's, it's my life and my, the, the things that I have that I've worked hard for in this world are not worth a fish.
No.
Okay, so.
I think we're gonna need to, uh, take a. If you have one more.
Can I just close real quick, sir?
Sure.
Just to let you all know, I have established an ice assessment team for this situation. It includes, uh. Folks from Kelly and Fire, uh, the resorts themselves. Um, the state of Minnesota DNR and I've asked, uh. Red Lake Conservation to be a part of it as well. Uh, we're gonna be meeting tomorrow at twelve thirty at Westwind. And I did, we did go up today and take some drone footage. And so. We're gonna be looking at this on a daily to every two to three day basis of going up and making assessments with the weather that we have. So. Yep.
With this kinda weather moving in, hopefully it'll get.
Cross your fingers, please.
Rick, thanks for coming down. Appreciate it.
Yes. They know more. People they come up if they're watching the news more, their spouse is watching the news and saying, hey, you're not gonna go out there. Thank you. All right, we're gonna take us. For the morning and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, ever being.
Well, general comments from the chair is, uh let's see. Yep. Yeah. I guess Happy New Year to uh fellow commissioners, county employees and Beltrami County constituents. It has been a pleasure serving as your chair in two thou- in twenty twenty-three. Last January, January, when I became chair, I stated my goals for the year, or a couple of them. One was to work together in a civilized manner with, while still retaining our individual beliefs. And the second one was working on Beltrami County issues in a nonpartisan manner. And I would like to thank the board. I believe that we did well with these two goals. As well as doing uh uh so with a positive sense of humor. With that, I wish that our, I wish our new chair and fellow commissioner uh success in twenty twenty-four. With that. We will commence with the election of the board and election of the vice chair.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion that Commissioner Carlson be the the twenty twenty-four chair of the board.
Well, here a second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Now we have election of the board vice chair.
Mister Chair, I move that we uh elect uh Commissioner Gosvig, the twenty twenty-four board vice chair.
Is there a second? I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. With that, I will uh Diane will do some moving. And uh well, then we'll get on with the new chair.
So we all okay?
Yep, right, one, right.
What, we all have to move?
Yeah, we all give.
I like my spot.
I know they don't want us to get too used to it. I will leave the signature sheet.
You can't bring that with you. You know, Mister, uh I remember uh when I was coming in chair, I didn't even get a a motion till like two or three minutes after. Nobody wanted me chair. Well, it's nice that I get two mics now, so.
Yeah, you're gonna really talk now. Get ready with that glove.
Yeah. Don't represent Norway. At this time, anyone wishing to address the county board, oh wait, I'm sorry, one other item first. Happy New Year, everyone. Happy New Year, all of my fellow commissioners, uh staff, employees. Uh I want to thank Richard for his uh being chair last year. Did a great job, Richard. Um I think it was a good year and I think you did achieve your goals and I I'm proud to say that I think uh we have a very good board and. And we do have a diverse opinions, but I think that we've been working well together and and that we respect each other and I appreciate that. And I expect that that will continue in twenty twenty-four. Um I guess it's a. Custom for the incoming chair to. Declare whether they're gonna vote on issues or not. I, it will be my intent to exercise my. Privilege to vote on every issue and not just a tiebreaker, so I will be voting on every issue. Uh just wanted to make that clear. Um other than that, uh look forward to twenty twenty-four. Now, this time, anyone wishing to address the county board on an item not on the agenda may come forward at this time to be recognized by the board chair. Seeing none, we'll move on.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the agenda with the following uh amendment or just adjustments. Uh item ten A will be the MRC membership uh topic and ten B will be the county administrator's report. Make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Um I'm wondering if we could talk a little bit more about the ice rescue. Uh discussion from earlier, make that the last agenda item. Just have a a couple more thoughts and a question for the board.
Any objections to that um? That would be on.
Oh, we already have a motion and a second on the the current agenda.
Yeah, it'd be a friendly, I guess.
So I. I don't, I mean, we're not gonna vote on anything. Well, I don't, I'll see.
It's timely.
Did you want to make a a motion to amend the motion?
Um if I, if I have to.
Well, if you have to ask for a friendly amendment, otherwise we gotta vote on the current motion first.
Second.
Mister Chair, there's two ways to handle your situation. The first is to have the first amend his motion, the second to agree to include. Uh Commissioner Gould's recommendation, or alternatively, Commissioner Gould can make a motion to amend and have to get a second. Then the vote would be on the amendment first, and if that passed or failed, you'd move on to the first. Motion, so those are your options for proceeding.
You gotta get out of the habit of doing this, so that, you know, these last minute things are something that we talked about many times in the past and. And we don't lose that at the last minute typically, so.
It'll be up there.
Mister Chair, you know, I mean, I. Sorry. You know, uh I think it was a few few meetings ago, you know, there was a discussion about um. What was it, per diems, that was discussed during the regular meeting, but then. There was a vote that that it got to go into the regular.
Time, time sensitive.
So, I and, so are we gonna pick and choose, you know, what what we want to. Discuss or not? I mean, if we're if we're gonna stay true to to limiting what the. What we put on the agenda, I think we really ought to stick to that, you know, I mean.
Commissioner, sorry, we all agreed to put the MRC thing on the agenda tonight earlier during the work session. Why was this not?
Well, because we ran out of time. I mean, I wish we had more time, you know, ma- maybe, maybe, you know. It would have been if we had.
Prior to you in the work session, he goes, hey, can we bring this up during the regular session at that time, instead of bringing it up after we've already motioned and seconded the agenda? That's my point. I'm I'm okay with accepting amendment this time, but let's try to make it not happen at last minute moving forward.
So I understand that uh there's uh been agreement by the second and agreement by the motioner to include discussion of ice rescues. Item ten C?
Item, well, then let's make it. But, oh, yeah, I guess we can make it item ten C for the ice rescue discussion.
Motion's been made and seconded uh to accept the agenda as written with the following. Uh additions, ten A, MRC membership, ten B administrative report and ten C ice rescues. Any other discussion?
Mister Chair, I'm just kind of curious, you know, Commissioner Gosberg uh mentioned that he doesn't want to make uh. Make this uh uh an ongoing thing, so I'm just kind of curious who's, you know, who uh. Who, who um runs the meeting? Is it the chair or the vice chair?
I'll do by making our votes. I'm just saying that it should be brought up in the work session if we're gonna add it to the agenda. It shouldn't be brought up after the agenda has already been motioned and seconded at the last second.